Good evening.
Good evening.
Welcome to the City of Douglas's Mayor and Commission Meeting. This was served as our regular meeting this dynamic day of August 12th, 2019. And tonight for our invocation, we will have Pastor Logan. He's a new pastor over at Gaines Chapel AME. Pastor Logan?
Yes, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, to the commissioners and to the fine citizens of Douglas, Georgia. It's a privilege and honor to have the opportunity to share with you briefly this evening. Thank you, sir. Fascinated as a preacher with words, and the word invocation is kind of fascinating to me. The idea that we're invoking the presence of someone who's already present. Psalm 24:1 says, "The earth is the Lord's and the fullness thereof the world and they that dwell therein." So how do you actually invoke someone's almost like someone inviting you into your own home? But in fact, invocation comes from the Latin invocare, which means to summon. In fact, what we're doing this evening through the process of an invocation is reminding ourselves of the fact that we are in the presence of one to whom we ultimately have responsibility and who gives us the authority to do what we do to serve. And so I want to appreciate and validate the service that you render to the citizenry and give us an opportunity also to remember as citizens that they work for us, not the other way around. So that we keep all of that in process and in progress. And we pray that God help us to remember and to always understand that we have only just a minute, only 60 seconds in it. Forced upon us, we can't refuse it. We didn't seek it, and Lord, we didn't choose it. It's up to us to use it, and we know ultimately we have to give an account if we abuse it. Just a tiny minute, oh Lord, but eternity is in it. In Jesus's name, amen.
Amen.
Thank you.
Thank you, Pastor Logan, and welcome to the great city of Douglas. Next, we will have the Pledge of Allegiance. If you would, please stand, and I will lead us into the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. You may be seated. Next on the agenda, we have the second reading of the event center to obtain alcohol license in the Town Center District.
This will be the second reading, be it ordained by the Mayor Board of Commissioners of the City of Douglas in a regular meeting assembled in pursuit of lawful authority thereof, the alcoholic beverages license. The alcoholic beverage order to the City of Douglas, Georgia is amended and stands amended as follows. Special event facility shall mean any place kept, used, maintained, advertised, or held out as a public place which serves and locates for special events, including not limited to concert performances, weddings and receptions, anniversary receptions, barback mitzvahs reception, birthday, holiday parties, company events such as retirement reception, employee appreciation events, and other similar parties, receptions, or events. Such facility may specifically include privately owned properties which have barns, lakes, open pastures, or fields where such special events may take place. Such facility shall be open only for scheduled event-based operations. Such facility shall now include places of worship or restaurants. No such facility shall be closer than 50 feet from a property line except in the Town Center District. Sales in the Town Center District. The Board of Commissioners may authorize the sale of alcohol by the drink under a Class III license in the Town Center District, provided the business meets the definition as a restaurant, pub, or special event facility as defined in Section 61 of the Alcoholic Beverage Code, or during any special event or catering event that is approved by the Board of Commissioners, often read for the first time at a regular meeting of the Mayor Board of Commissioners of the City of Douglas, Georgia on July 27th, 2019, read for the second time and passed ordained at a regular meeting of the Mayor Board of Commissioners at property advertising caption as required on the charter of the City of Douglas, Georgia on August 12th, 2019. This is read for action.
Read for action. At this time, I entertain a motion.
Motion.
It's been motioned in second. Any further discussion?
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
This is a timely ordinance. Bill ordained by the Mayor Board of Commissioners of Douglas in a regular meeting assembled in pursuit of lawful authority thereof, the traffic of the City of Douglas, Georgia is hereby amended and stands amended as follows. Only those persons who hold a valid motor vehicle driver's license may drive a motorized car on the authorized streets and parking areas of the city. The driver must have their valid driver's license on their person while operating the motorized car. The driver must follow all restrictions, conditions, and associated with the class and type of driver licenses as set forth from the licensing authority, often read for the first time at a regular meeting of the Mayor Board of Commissioners of the City of Douglas, Georgia on July 22nd, 2019, read for the second time and passed ordained at a regular meeting of the Mayor Board of Commissioners of the City of Douglas, Georgia at property advertising caption as required on the charter of Douglas on August 12th, 2019, and this is read for action.
Thank you very much, Mr. Adams. At this time, I entertain a motion.
I move.
It's been motioned in second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Next on the agenda, we have the recognition of the GRPA State Golf Championship Champions and State Runner-Ups. That will be our Parks and Recreation Director, Mr. Stevie Young. How you doing with your pretty pink on?
All is well, Mr. Mayor. Thank you. Thank you. Just as always, and I come before you and have opportunity, I get to toot our own horn in Parks and Recreation, City of Douglas Parks, Parks and Recreation Department. This evening, I have Ms. Ally, Ms. Ally Davis here. Please step up, Ms. Ally. Ms. Ally was the state champion, golf champion in 13 and under girls.
Congratulations. Good job.
I would also like to acknowledge, I'd like to acknowledge Mr. John Paul Spivey. He was a state champion in 11 under boys. He's not here. And his younger brother, Lucas Spivey, was with 8 under boys there in the back. Oh, send them up. Where are they? They wait the weightlifters. They're with the weightlifters. Let's get those cats up here.
Mr. Spivey. Mr. Spivey.
One up here. What's up? That's what's up. All right, Mr. John Paul, raise your hand for Mr. John Paul. That's Mr. John Paul, 11 under boys, state champion, and Mr. Lucas Spivey, 8 under boys, state runner-up. You know, in the same household.
Congratulations.
Same household. And we also have a state tennis champion that's not present. I don't believe she's in the back, is she? Ms. Ellie Willingham. Ms. Ellie Willingham, I want to certainly recognize her, acknowledge her whether or not she's here or not, but she deserves that. And once again, from baseball, softball, basketball, swim, you know, the Coffee High School football Trojans team is very successful. Now, we just got to get our youth football program in line with that. But next, we are a well-rounded sports athletic program, and thank you for the City of Douglas and Coffee County for supporting our programs. Once again, our state champions, state runner-ups.
All right. Thank you. Congratulations. Congratulations, and thank y'all.
I always have to say something about our youth. Again, our Parks and Recreation always say that our youth are our greatest ambassadors to Douglas community. And one of the reasons why we like, as the Mayor and Commissioner, to bring individuals that represent our community, can't vote, but it's still your community. And when you go out and you participate in athletics or any event, you bring light to the City of Douglas, and we're grateful for that. We're grateful for your parents getting you to and from the tournaments and to and from practice and trying to make sure that your day has some consistency. So we always want to recognize any of our youth that are doing well, bringing light upon the city, and it's always a good feeling to just know that your community, our Parks and Recreation, as Stevie said, well-rounded. When Douglas Parks, Douglas Coffee County Parks and Recreation shows up, you got something to deal with. You got your hands full. You got your hands full now. It just ain't going to be a walk in cake, in a cake factory. You got your hands full. And I just want everyone to know that as the mayor of the City of Douglas, this is the highlight of me being the mayor, is recognizing our youth. So again, would you please, George?
I would like to bring Coach Booth in to acknowledge our Coffee High School, Coffee High School Trojan Junior Olympic Weightlifting Team that has been some national awards and a national recognition. Coach Booth, it's your show.
Good evening, everyone. I'm going to try to make this brief. These guys all just came from football practice, some of them at the middle school, high school, and they're nasty. See Zine's hair is messy. And they stink, so we're going to get them out of here pretty quick. This summer, we had the opportunity to travel to Anaheim, California, to compete in the Youth National Weightlifting Championships. It's Olympic-style lifting. It's a clean and jerk and snap.
We went to California this time.
Anaheim.
That's how we went to somewhere.
We were in Michigan. We were in Grand Rapids. So this, they move it around every year, and this time, we had to fly, but we had a great trip, got to see a lot of neat things. It's great weather, but I don't think I'd want to live in California all the time. If we could bring the weather here, it'd be super. But we had a great time. We were the national champions overall. We also had some individual champions as well, and as I called them out, I'll let you know who those individuals were. Arless, you got out of order here, but that's okay. I'm going to start with the youngest guys first. This is Range Robinson. Range was the national, Range was the national champion in the 44-kilo weight class. This is his second Nationals correct, Range, and his first National Championship, and that was a big thing for us, that's Range. Next one, we had Zine Preston. Zine came in fourth. He was in the 55-kilo class. Now, these guys were in the 13 and under division, so they're 13 years or younger. And then the last one we had in that weight class was Brady Shook. He was a national runner-up in the 13 and under in his division, which was a 73-kilo weight class. So those are all my 13 and unders. We have a couple of 14 to 15 guys in our 81-kilo class. Sultan Cooper lifted in that class, and he also had in the same weight class, we had Jake Lindsay lifted in that class for us. And then we had a couple of guys lift in the 14, 15, 89-plus class, a little bit bigger guys. There's Dane Rish right here and his sidekick over here, Will Lott. They lifted in that class. And then our last lifter that we had was a 16, 17, and he lifted, this was his last year lifting at school age Nationals, because once you're 17, you can't lift anymore. You have to lift juniors. And that's Arless Sutton, and Arless has got his medal today. He's very proud of that. Arless earned the bronze medal in the clean and jerk in his weight class. So those were the eight guys that we took this year, and I think next year, I think it's in Raleigh, North Carolina, so we don't have to travel nearly as far next year. So Arless would be the only guy that can't go back with us, but he can compete at a higher level at the juniors. Those are the guys, and once again, they were overall national champions this year. We were with Team Divergent. The guys did a great job. We had a great time. So I'm done.
Again, national champion from Douglas, Georgia. Douglas, Georgia, national champion. Always say that them Coffee High Trojans are mighty. Y'all proved that. Let's tell you, I appreciate everything that y'all do, coach, parents. This is what it's all about. A young adult, male or female, has the opportunity to be a productive citizen when we have them in a controlled environment with some discipline. Got to have some rules and guidelines and this and that. In weightlifting, you just can't lift those weights any type of way, correct? You got to follow the rules. Same thing that's applicable in life. You have to follow the rules. I retired from the United States Military. I'm a rule follower. Just by nature, I'm a rule follower. But I need y'all to understand that when y'all leave the great city of Douglas, Georgia and Coffee County, we may not be there with you, but I'm always rooting for you, and y'all have done a great job. And I thank you. I thank the coach, the parents, and everybody for national champion. That's what I'm talking about. One more time. The only reason why I couldn't go, they say, once you turn 17, you can't lift anymore. It would have been nice there. We're good? We're good.
Come on out here, come on.
Everybody's got to squeeze in.
I see a double line. I look, do a double line.
Hey, Will, if they need more room, you can step out of the picture.
Don't be ugly to my lady.
Y'all look this way.
Why don't you tell them, people's at your house. It's down the alley. Shh, don't tell people. Hold on. Y'all can flag on it.
Hey, y'all. Y'all got to come in some more.
I do a double line.
Okay.
Congratulations.
God bless you.
We're proud of y'all.
All right, time to take y'all.
Lady?
I don't smell gold.
All right, good thing.
My head ain't that bald.
Next on the agenda, we have the consent agenda items. As always, we'll turn that over to our city manager, and he will read off the items that we placed on, excuse me, the consent agenda from the work session. Mr. Davis, how you doing?
Doing well, sir. We have five items coming over on the consent agenda. We have item one, approval of the July 22nd, 2019 minutes. Item two, approval of appointment to the Airport Commission. Item three, approval of a $5,000 transfer to the Land Bank Authority of Douglas Coffee County. Item five, approval of the purchase to $2,019 Chargers. And item six, approval of the renting of the old city shop to S&amp;S Asphalt and Paving, or Concrete Company. Those are the five items.
At this time, I entertain a motion for those items placed on the consent agenda.
So moved.
It's been motioned in second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. There were no items that we brought forward, correct? So if you would, if you would mark through item number nine. Next, we have the staff comments. Ms. Georgia Henderson.
Roger Goddard.
Roger?
Good evening, once again.
Good evening.
Just a reminder that next drunk drop-off day, drunk drop-off day will be Saturday, August the 17th, 8:30 until 12 noon. Also, the City of Douglas, I encourage citizens to attend and become part of various city communities and boards. We got current vacancies on the Ethics Committee, Airport Commission, and Library Board. If anybody that is interested in these positions, they can contact Ms. Winetta Boulder at 389-3405. And the city is now, has the areas approved for the motorized car crossings, and if you need any information, you can contact my office at the City Marshal's Office at 389-3462. Also, we are having the Gopher Tortoise Festival in downtown on September the 6th and 7th. For more information on that, you can contact the Chamber of Commerce at 384-1873. Also, qualifying of candidates for the Douglas Municipal Elections is going to be November the 5th, 2019.
That's an election.
Oh, that's, no, excuse me. Okay, it's going to be August 19th through Thursday, August the 22nd at 4:30, and ending at Friday, August the 23rd at 8:30 to 12 p.m. Qualifying fees is going to be for mayors, $288. Qualifying fees for the city commissioners is $216. For more information, you can contact the city clerk, Winetta Boulder. And that's it.
Thank you. Next on the agenda, we have Mayor and Commissioner's comment. Let's start out with Mr. Taylor.
Thank you, Mayor. How you doing?
I'm doing well.
First of all, thank the Lord for another day. Thank you for life, health, and strength. Main thing, which everybody is aware of, hot weather. And to the citizen that work for the City of Douglas and whoever's working on outside, guys cutting lawn, everything, lest be mindful, the tip to is a hundred and above. And I'm advising everybody, please, ma'am, please, sir, to take breaks so that, you know, due to the heat, because I was in my yard today trying to trim some flowers, and I think I do three flowers, I go in the house, and two off there, I go back out there, you know, never did get finished. So if you ride by my house, the limbs and things are still there, but it is hot weather. You want everybody to be mindful of that and be cautious because that the hot weather is not playing, you know. Another thing I want to bring up is for the last past month, month and a half, all events that's been going on in Douglas as far as the school supplies, that I think Whitegrass, was it Whitegrass? No, it was, what company?
Safeway.
Safeway. They started out with handing out book bags and different business helped out, you know, even out to Roundtree Park, they was there. And I just enjoy, enjoy the fellowship that, where the community came together and supplied the schools, supplied for the kids, for the ones that was unfortunate, you know, and for the ones that was fortunate, they had enough supply for everyone to make sure that everybody get off on the right foot for school. School have started back. We want to make sure everybody, you know, get an early start, so you won't be rushing right through school zone because chief have extra polices out there, and they will give you a ticket if you mess around and go through those school zones speeding, you know. So please, ma'am, please, sir, start out early. They have already announced, they have already announced that trash dump off is Saturday. Please, ma'am, please, sir, let's try to take advantage of the two Saturdays out of the month. We're still continuing to dump our sofa and stuff that we don't want, somewhere else that not in our area, but they're dumping it in other people's area. You don't want it, and they don't want it neither. So please, ma'am, please, sir, it does not cost you anything to dump your trash on every other Saturday, you know. So let's take advantage of that.
Other than that, Mayor?
Good? Mr. Dur?
Reiterating on what he said about, about the hot weather, we all need to drink enough fluids, enough water, and everything, you know. And also, my comments are as follow. Our prayers go out back to our kids that went back to school, 2019 and 2020 year calendar year, our prayers are with them that they have a safe school year this year. Also, I'd like to give hats off to public safety, such as our police department, the Coffee County Sheriff Department, the Hamelands, I mean, the Coffee Regional, everybody that played a part in our national night out. I really enjoyed it. It was very nice to see all of those public safeties come together, and when they came together, they really showed our children a great time. Even with the swimming, they was having a great time. And my hats go out to you all on that achievement and just for doing that for our community, because I was looking at on Facebook, other communities doing it in their cities. And the City of Douglas really went out big, and they showed their love to the children. And my hats go out to the chief and everyone else, and that's about all. And just keep our city in your prayers. That's it.
Mayor, I forgot one thing.
Yes.
I'd just like to, my prayers go out to our, when I was city manager, Mayor, Ms. Jackie Wilson. I just want to keep the family in prayers, you know, as they go through this transaction and all, because I had the opportunity to attend the funeral on Saturday and just listen at the different ones talk from the family. She was the backbone, and I don't know who's going to step up to that plate, but, you know, Mr. Jackie Wilson will be missing. My prayers go out to the family.
Mayor Prochey?
Good evening.
Good evening.
In addition to our weightlifting team, I'd like to congratulate our Douglas Stingrays, the Douglas Coffee County Stingrays. Mayor had the opportunity to come out and greet them in person, but they won a state championship at the state swim meet.
How many points?
It went in close.
312.
Yeah, they blew them out. It was a blowout. We had, we had a couple swimmers get state championships, and a couple of the relay teams won state championships as well, and I think one of them set a state record, so that's a very successful time, and just, I think that's what, about seven state championships our teams won?
I think it's four out of the last six years.
Four out of the last six.
Is that right, Stevie?
That's correct.
Four out of the last six.
Very successful program. We congratulate them and congratulate all our coaches out there for the job they're doing with those young people. Of course, we all know over the last couple of weeks, we've had some somber events as well, that some of our young, reminds us, some of our young people are not quite doing as well in life. And I'm talking about the recent shootings that we've seen on a national level that we continue to have. I have to say, I agree with one young man's suggestion that perhaps we're looking at firearms. We have a Second Amendment, of course, and the right as Americans to bear firearms, but in the case we're looking at the type of rifles that we keep getting sent that are used in these mass shootings, I think we may need to assess who is getting a hold of those rifles. And I hope that we're looking at on the federal and state level to ensure that people who don't have, who are mentally competent that have those firearms. But I also go back to, you know, there's good and there's evil. And I said this before, and I'll say it again, I think right now is a good time. We're starting new school year. The best thing I think that we can do to help this younger generation, what we can do as parents and grandparents is pass along the teachings of the Lord Jesus Christ and that are, to me, the backbone of Christianity and actually the backbone of Judaism. And if you look at other world religions, I think that the concepts that you find in the commandments are universal. You'll find them in Exodus, Chapter 20, verses 3 through 17. I would encourage us as parents and grandparents to take the time in the next week or so to, as we start this new school year, to sit down with our children and go over these requirements. I don't know if we're emphasizing enough what's contained in them, and not only read them, but discuss them and talk about, you know, what's expected out of each of us, you know, and it's a reminder, I need reminding, just like anybody else, you know, sometimes we get casual about our faith. It's not hard to do this day and time, but that's what I would encourage us to do if we want to make a difference. We have that opportunity every day as parents, grandparents, those teachers, anyone who has a role in a child's life has the opportunity to make a difference. And let's not exert that responsibility or take it lightly, or, you know, I don't know all the facts or the situations, but I, from what I gather, when you analyze the kind of folks that are going out there and doing these terrible acts, things aren't all as they should be. I don't see a bunch of people that's been raising a good family and going to church every Sunday, going out there and doing these things. So there are things I think that we can do to safeguard our children and make sure that they are getting taught correct principles. And I hope that we commit as a community to do those things. That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you. Commissioner Pearson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Go.
Just basically want to reiterate everything that has already been said in congratulating our
I don't see a bunch of people that's, that's been raising a good family and going to church every Sunday, going out there and doing these things. So there are things I think that we can do to safeguard our children to make sure that they are getting taught correct principles. And I hope that we commit as, as a community to do those things. That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you. Commissioner Pearson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
Just basically want to reiterate everything that has already been said in congratulating our youth. I want to also give God the glory, for he is worthy to be praised. I just thank him so much for allowing me to be here because some of you know some of the things I've been through, so I just want to let the Lord know, I just, I just really appreciate how he's working and moving in me. Yes, in repeating what has already been said concerning our young people tonight, we are very proud of all of the young people. You know, it just really makes you wonder how, what happens to cause young people to turn to go and kill many, many, many people, you know? So I don't have the answer to that other than it's Satan, we, we know that, that he's behind it, but somewhere as communities, leaders, parents, teachers, clergy, I don't think we're doing enough. I'm not putting anybody down or criticizing anyone, but something is terribly wrong somewhere. And all I know to do is just keep praying and asking God to fix it. But I appreciate our young people tonight who we recognize for doing a great job in selling and athletics. Please keep up the good work, stay in your books, don't give in to peer pressure and influence when you get older and other kids try to get you to drink or do whatever. Please, please, please stick to your teachings because I think that's a lot of where the problem comes from. These all kinds of drugs that's in the world nowadays and, and, and the breakdown of the family structure with having two, two parents there to raise these kids. Also, I want to thank my attorney who represented me and, and the frivolous lawsuit the other year, attorney Julius Collins, he grew up here, he moved here at a young age, but I taught him in, in middle school. He's turned out to be a great young man, very proud of him, thank him for giving back to the community. That's what it takes to make a difference in some of these children's lives. They've got to have positive role models. So attorney Collins, my hat goes off to you. Your mom would really be proud if she could see how you have excelled in your career as an attorney. Also Tyree Hill with NFL, he contributed to the school supplies with attorney Collins. His family was out there and I think they told, said that he was practicing whatever kind of spring, whatever training this is, I don't know. He was, he was playing, he couldn't come, but anyway, we thank you, Mr. Hill. We appreciate everybody who have genuine love for Douglas Coffee County because it's easy to say you love, but it shows you love when you do what you can to help the community be a better place. I like to keep the Bere families in prayer. There were several families. Mayor Jackie Wilson, I had an opportunity to serve with Mayor Wilson for four years, one term. I think she did a great job and she had worked for the city of Douglas, I think it might have been over thirty something years.
Forty-seven.
Forty-seven, oh, I'm way off. But anyway, Ms. Wilson contributed so much to the city of Douglas and because of her, that's a lot of reason as to why we have the city that we have. Jackie, Jackie did a very, very great job and I went to view the body Friday night. I told the family I wouldn't be able to come back out on Saturday, but my prayers were definitely with them. As well as the Joyce Reed Graham family and Ms. Queen Wilson family. And then I learned today, I think it was, the young lady, Ms. Kendra White passed. Let's keep all these families in our prayers. Ms. White has several children. We really need our community to step up because it takes a village to raise these kids and now their mom is gone. So what happens when stuff like this happen? My heart really goes out to her because I helped to raise my four nieces and nephews when my sister passed away at the young age of twenty-eight and she left behind four kids. So, Lord, help us. Prayers for the Bere families. And lastly, I wanted to say, I don't know, is there going to be an executive session tonight, Mr. City Manager?
I have nothing to bring forward tonight, ma'am.
Okay. I'm asking the question again because, you know, we've had a lot of things to go on in the city of Douglas concerning some of our employees and stuff. And to be quite frank, I don't have really any information about all of this stuff that has transpired. Like for instance, people called me, said there was a big write-up in the newspaper about something concerning bribery or whatever. And then the previous incidents that were in the paper concerning those other names that, that I've, I've mentioned before. I mean, I just, I really don't know what's going on and, and I think that this mayor commission has a right to be briefed by you in executive session so we can ask questions or whatever.
I mean, that would be up to the mayor commission, I'd restate everything that was in the email that I sent you, but I mean, with all the information that was in, I mean, I'd restate that, but I mean, that would be y'all's call, y'all want to go in the executive session to discuss, to discuss that.
Okay. Let me ask this question then, because for the last times that I've brought it up to have an executive session, it's been voted down, so I'm not going to bring it up, I'm going to wait for you to tell us that we're going to an executive session. But I want to know, I was told that there were some individuals present from some investigative agency questioning city employees, is there any truth to that?
I mean, there's been from the law enforcement agency that you're referring to, they've been on site for, since this beginning of one of the cases. And then last week, somebody asked, an outside agency asked somebody to look into something and so they're currently looking into something. And I was, but see, I was, I cannot, I cannot make mention of anything because I was sworn to secrecy by the law enforcement agency and I was asked not to even make mention to any of the elected on this until they're through with everything, so.
On, on both cases, all cases that's going on right now? Because I know about the last one last.
Right, I mean, we've only had one, the GBI investigated the, what was in the paper last week, which was the bribery charges, they're at the cemetery operation. And then out of that, they've asked, somebody's asked them to look into something else and so, I mean, it's out now since I'm being questioned here, but I was asked not to make mention of anything until that was resolved, so.
You know, and out of my twenty years of serving, this has never been the case. The mayor and council have, have always been informed of what was going on in an executive session and not, and not, I mean, I'm in a public meeting, but we, we're not having an executive session, so I don't know how else to get this information. I just.
I mean, all I can say is if I'm, if I'm asked to sworn to secrecy or sworn not to say anything, I can't say anything, that's, and I can't, I mean, I'm being asked now to speak about something, but.
But that goes against our charter with us being, we're supposed to be privy to anything concerning the city of Douglas.
Well, these have not been your normal cases. I mean, the, the normal cases in the past have not been some of what I call some of the crazy stuff or whatever is going on. And so like even this, I mean, even about the information that came about, it's kind of out of the normal chain of protocol or standard protocol. And so this question that was being asked of me, I was asked not to make mention of anything, so.
So did you mention to them, well, the city charter says that mayor and commission have a right to all information concerning the city of Douglas employees or whatever?
Yeah, I mean, when it's, when it's higher than the city organization that's doing the investigation, they have rights that are probably, that trumps our, our, our charter on these cases or whatever. And so I'm just doing what I was asked to be told and that's.
Okay. Okay, I want something, I would like something in writing from the agency saying that you were advised not to disclose this stuff to us because like I say, this is new. Out of twenty years, it's never been like this. And I know I hear you saying that the way the case is or whatever, but the charter does not specify, it doesn't, you know, say you can on this and you can on that.
I will ask them, I don't know if they, they will do that because they're not in normal policy writing, but I'll. And I'll even share your email that I sent them when I asked for it, if you don't, if you don't believe, I ask them, I'll send.
Well, I just, I just, no, it's not fair to us. It's not fair to us to, to hear stuff happening in the city and it comes out in the paper and we have no knowledge, no knowledge at all. It's not fair, so.
Even the stuff that came out of the paper, it was a two-day lead notice after, after the grand jury, had their sealed indictments. When the judge opened it, soon as they opened it, I sent it to y'all the same day as the judge opened it, so I mean, I can't be any quicker than the judge, I mean, that's.
Well, but the previous two were not indicted yet, were they? The first two?
Right, I mean, they have not been.
They haven't been indicted, but still nothing, nothing on that. Like for instance, I heard that you held the appeal hearing on one of those guys, I heard.
Yes, ma'am.
So have, have you made your decision yet?
I have not written the, the final letter, yes, ma'am.
Okay. See, stuff like that, just if you could say, I'm hearing the appeal of such and such employee and I'll let you all know, but anyway, thank you. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Commissioner McNeil.
Let's see, Mayor, I first of all would like to, on a positive note, and with some excitement here, I would like to congratulate Ms. Blondell today. Could you tell us a little bit, I was hoping Georgia could be here and share with us the honor that she has received as being elected chairman, I think, or president of the Magnolia Midlands Association, the Tourism Association. And Ms. Blondell Thomas said we're very, very proud of her and very pleased at the job she's done and the job she will do to represent us throughout the state with the Magnolia Midlands Tourism Association. And Mayor, I think, you know, we've had some very serious things going on in the community this week that have caused us to wake up and say that, you know, we need to all be very much aware of the laws and ordinances that are in place with regard to recreational vehicles, for example, with four-wheelers and golf carts and things like that. We want to remind young people and parents of young people to please keep your children safe and let them, let them know that these are not toys on the road. And when you get in the path of a motorized vehicle, I'm speaking of the accident out on one fifty-eight that could have been quite a tragedy, I think. I see Officer Edmiston here and you know what, what I'm discussing here with those children out there. We want to remind you that they're, they need to be sixteen years of age to drive these and these need to have lights and things like that for their safety. And then I'm also asking the citizens of Douglas to be very careful to look out for these children or these young people. And wish everybody the best of success and a good year of learning in the school system, safety for bus drivers and those students as they wait at the bus stops and stuff early in the morning. And again, I, I think that's all I have, Mayor. Thank you, though.
Thank you. Mr. Moore.
Again, I want to thank Stevie and his recreation program for the good job that they continue to do and this has been going on. I've been around here sixty years and it's just been going on and it's continued to go on and we congratulate you all on what you're doing and the effort that you put forth to make a difference in these young folks' lives. I also want to congratulate them, the ones who, one, and those who participated. But two, I want to express the deep sympathy to the Wilson family, lost Jackie Wilson, I spent thirty years working with her. She was an excellent lady, an excellent leader, and she was a backbone of that family. And it was a tragedy to all of us who were associated with her, along with the family in losing Jackie. She was a tough lady and she did a good job. And again, school started back, we want the kids to be safe and people to watch out for the kids because they don't necessarily watch out for you, but they, they just think of life's free and fancy and they could have things to happen. And we just hope that you will watch out for them and protect them and everybody be safe. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. My comments are as follows. First of all, I want to give an official welcome to, to our great city, to Pastor Logan of Gaines Chapel, AME. Welcome to the dynamic city of Douglas, Georgia. Look forward for your involvement in our community, bring some ideas for some of those big cities, see if we can make them work down here in old Douglas, Georgia. Next, we've already talked about schools and our children. I really want to stress safety. Leave about fifteen minutes early. Leave about fifteen minutes early, set your alarm clock fifteen minutes early. Today, my wife actually woke me up because I didn't set the alarm clock. I normally, you know, I'm normally up way before the alarm clock goes on, so I was like, well, I have to be at a certain spot on the road at a certain time. So I was like, okay, let's just sit down, take five minutes. I want to make sure that my mind is not in a hurry, that way I'm trying to get where I'm supposed to be. So I actually was about ten minutes off of my normal schedule this morning. But reason why I say that, sometimes we're in such a hurry to try to get to work on time, you know, you have to be mindful. As someone's already said, we have little small children out there getting ready to get on the bus, you know, they're a little excited, they got the new tennis shoes on, they think they can run faster, they're just all eager and stuff like that. So be mindful, let's be very watchful of our children out there getting ready to go to school. To everyone that's in school, especially at the high school, look, this is it here, this is it. Don't let high school be the best four years of your life. The more you learn, the more you earn. Remember, the person with the big desk at the front of that class already has a degree, already has a job. That knowledge that they have, they're trying to pass it on to you so that you can be a productive citizen. Let's be mindful and let's be respectful, teachers and principals, let's be respectful towards the students and students likewise, let's be respectful to the adults. Also, we have a number of new teachers that are going into the school system, please, let's not beat them up too bad. You know, we're trying to hold on to some good teachers, so students, let's let them get past the first week or so before we start causing chaos, okay? The next thing is, I'm always reminded of the staff at the school and now me, I was probably shaped by a number of teachers, but my bus drivers are the ones that caused all the trouble in my life because they toll on me a lot. Trying to catch Ms. Georgia May, bus number nine from Brockston, Georgia, because that was the last bus to run, wanted to be on that bus. Ms. Georgia May popped me upside the head a few times. So I want you to be mindful and be, be thankful for your bus drivers, be thankful for those bus monitors also, because guess what? You always got to be mindful who's talking to your child. And Ms. Georgia May, yeah, she probably bust me upside the head. She ain't never tell me to do nothing wrong, you know what I mean? She didn't tell me to do nothing wrong. Then we go to the cooks, love them cooks, because if you smile at them, they give you a little bit more on your plate. But once again, you see them every day and they also toll on me too, so. The press could toll on me too. They hit me upside the head, Grandma Emma Lou hit me upside the head when I got home, but be mindful of those cooks, they get in there at old dark thirty to prepare those meals, to make sure that we. They get in there at o dark thirty to prepare those meals, to make sure that we have a meal before our children at an early age, that is, I'd say, an early hour, is hot and delicious. And the last person is actually served as my bus driver and a janitor, Mr. Leroy. Don't ask me what Mr. Leroy's last name was because I wasn't allowed to know his last name. But spent a lot of time riding that bus back out to Seals Trailer Park. That was one of the last people to get off the bus because that's where Mr. Leroy lived at. And man, the things I remember about that conversation was life-changing. Didn't realize it then. And that's what I try to get our youth to understand. There are life lessons being presented to you now that you may not fully understand, but with a little age and a little wisdom, you'll get those meanings. Next, want to talk about those dynamic parks and recreation. I think that we might have to call the city and the county of champions because our parks and recreation have gone far and beyond representing our city and our county in places that, look, when we show up, you got to have your A-game because we bringing ours in all sports. We're not one-dimensional. We are not one-dimensional. We try to do our best in all our sports. And God has blessed us to have a staff over there that I actually think are grown-ups with a child's heart because they get just as excited as the children and that's what we need. The other thing is the weightlifting, national champions, national, national now, not state, national. Went three thousand miles, three thousand miles to go snatch some dead weight with that Coffee High Trojan emblem on their chest from Coffee High School, Douglas, Georgia. Now about to lift. Nobody mentioned, nobody named on this council out of Anaheim. Nobody on this council name was mentioned in Anaheim, California. But again, those youth took our name, our city and our county and represented us very well. Always, remember, those are our greatest ambassadors. Next thing, the mayor pro temp, he actually said something about the gun violence. I'm going to say this right here about that and I'm going to move on because I have my opinion. In order for evil to prevail, it's for good men to do nothing. Let me say that again now. In order for evil to prevail, it's for good men to do nothing. Remember that. My last comment goes out to Mayor Wilson's family. Ms. Jackie Wilson started working for the city of Douglas, I think it was a year before I was born. Just think about that now. She started working for the city a year before I was born. So let's be mindful of that. Our former city manager, Mr. Jacobs, used to always say, public service is a ministry. And let's just think about that. We get the opportunity sometimes to intersect with a citizen at a difficult time in their life, a challenging time in their life. And we have the necessary resources and hopefully the heart and the compassion to help ease that burden a little bit. For forty-seven years, Mayor Wilson, as an employee, walked these hallways. Left her family on many mornings, probably missed a few birthdays and games and stuff like that. Going to Atlanta or going here or going there, researching, staying down here late at night to put a budget together. The city of Douglas has a great credit rating. When we take out a loan, we normally get a great percentage or interest rate. I believe that as the mayor of the city of Douglas, we are indebted to the Wilson family and that's a debt that we cannot pay. Forty-seven years and then to ascend to the position of mayor. That's a job well done. Little young girl from Pearson, Georgia, came over here and did good. She did good. For that, we will always, as the city of Douglas and Coffee County, be indebted to Mayor Jackie Wilson and the sacrifices of her family. I know that we have a utilities meeting, so we will take a quick recess to let everybody leave and we'll go from there, okay? Let's take a quick recess and we'll do the utilities.